Call the meeting of the August 27, 2013, Board of Supervisors. Everybody rise to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the great soul with liberty and justice for all.
Role call. Ready?
Clear.
Joe.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Motion to present the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Charles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence, there's a letter in all the registry of the national historical places for the shipwreck Australasia.
Australasia.
Australasia, okay. And then there's also a letter in there of the Anna Sign Fund balance. Is there any public comment? Anybody want to speak? That'd be good. Moving on, no supervisor response since nobody made a comment. Today we have Ms. Door County here, Samantha Cole, on her, going to give a little talk on her platform of Prevent Suicide, Door County. Sam, Samantha, come forward.
She has a slideshow available. Grant, could you grab the lights there, I think, a little bit anyway, so. Go ahead.
Hi, how are we doing today?
Good.
Good morning.
Good, my name is Samantha, I'm Miss Door County 2013, for a few more months. Today I'm going to be talking about my platform, Suicide Prevention. Suicide is a permanent solution to a temporary problem. That's the message I want to get across to people, especially teens, who think every issue is the end of the world. It is not, life goes on. So, a little about me. I chose this platform because when I was in middle school, a kid, well, a close friend in the grade above me committed suicide, and it started a whole world of controversy at Spastipool when I was attending. And then a few months later, my best friend committed suicide. We were in the eighth grade. That is way too young to be taking your life. Now, at 23, I think about him all the time. What would he have done? Where would he have gone to school? What would his career be now that we're graduating college? It's estimated that for every suicide, there are six survivors. Survivor is categorized as someone left behind, whether it be a parent, a sibling, someone that's affected by the suicide directly, or indirectly, like a classmate, or a teacher. All right, so let's set this up in context. We have Bob. Bob is living in Chicago. Bob gets laid off. Bob is having a mental health crisis. Bob's contemplating suicide. Bob completes a suicide. He now leaves behind a mother, a father, a sibling, a coworker, a friend, and a spouse or significant other. Six people. How many of us can think of more than six people that would be sad if we died? I know I can. One of the blessings in disguise and a curse in the same. Bob now lives in Door County. Bob leaves behind the same six survivors, but he also has mom and dad's friends, siblings' friends, classmates, church groups, the entire company where he works. Now you're affecting an entire community. The entire county is affected by one person's death. This is where we need to get down to the facts. Every 14 minutes, a suicide occurs somewhere in the United States. So in the time that I'm going to be talking, somewhere around the world has taken their own life. It is the second-leading cause of death among youth ages zero to 19, the beginning of their life, and this is the leading, one of the leading causes, that they die. Men complete suicide more than four times as often as women, but women attempt suicide more often. Hmm, this is a little interesting. Well, that's because firearms are the choice of men, the most common method. And now we're seeing a little bit more of a growth towards suicide by cop. I don't know if any of you have heard of that. It's where they can't do it themselves, so they pull a weapon and the cop is forced to shoot them. This is more common with young men, below the age of 19. Women, on the other hand, prefer a more subtle route. Suffocation, drugs, poisoning, overdoses, that's the route women tend to take. Psychologists are kind of looking at this more as women's domestic side, not to be stereotypical, but women are more concerned about cleaning up the mess, so they choose a route that doesn't leave a mess behind. All right, looking a little bit at Wisconsin. Wisconsin is the 13th highest suicide rate in the county. The higher we get, we're looking more towards Nebraska, where smaller towns, farther apart, a lot of empty space where you're alone with your thoughts. Wisconsin has a lot of towns, and we're not super spread out, but we're getting there. New York is one of the lowest because it's a big city, a lot of people around. In 2010, just to kind of put things in perspective, 33,300 people committed suicide in the United States. That was reported. 1,000, almost 1,000 of them were in Wisconsin. That is huge. If 1,000 were every state, it'd be 33 states. We have way more than 33 states. All right, looking a little bit closer to home. Door County has the second highest rate of suicide per 1,000 in the state. This is because we're a smaller community, there's not, we barely have 1,000, 100,000 people. So, one, that's huge. One suicide in our tiny little county is huge. In 2010, we had a rate of 16.31. The next closest was 14.3, and I think it was Marathon County. Milwaukee has one of the lowest because it's one of the largest counties. Between 2001 and 2011, there were 49 suicides in Door County, 134 ER visits for self-inflicted Between 2001 and 2006, there were 113 inpatient hospitalizations due to self-inflicted injuries. A lot of these were teens, some of them were elderly, their, every age group is at risk for suicide. And between 2007 and 2009, suicide was the second-leading cause of injury-related deaths in Wisconsin. And it was one of the leading, I think, falls, accidental falls, ranked over suicides in Door County for that time span. So, you may ask yourself, well, how do I prevent this? What do I look for? How can I help? Here are some of the warning signs. If someone is threatening or talking about wanting to die, that's a huge red flag. If they are talking about it, that means they are at the point that they don't care, it is a cry for help. Increased apathy or hopelessness, if someone just says, mm, it doesn't matter anymore. When they're not normally like that, it's a sign. Poor eating or sleeping habits, if their daily routine is getting out of balance and something is throwing it off, I'd look into that. Acquiring a gun, now we're hunters, that's Wisconsin culture. But if someone who doesn't normally hunt went out and bought a handgun just to have one, I would be concerned. Stockpiling pills or substance abuse, this one might be a little harder to see unless it starts affecting their work or relationships. This one can be kept a secret for a long time. Putting personal affairs in order, if people start giving things away, especially teens, start giving away their favorite CDs or movies to friends, just because, I would be worried. Withdrawal from friends, family, or activities once enjoyed. This is the typical sign of depression. If someone used to love music and all of a sudden doesn't want to do music anymore, that could be a sign. Now, never be afraid to ask. If someone is thinking about suicide, you're not going to put the thought in their head by asking them. They're probably already thinking about it, and I don't know about you, but personally, I would rather have someone be mad at me for asking, and they weren't, than have them dead later. So here are a few places where you can go for help. I do have these on a card if anyone is interested, little wallet sizes to carry around. There is a Door County Crisis Hotline, which is excellent, because not all the counties in Wisconsin have this. There is also a National Suicide Prevention Hotline. You can also see a doctor or therapist if you yourself are thinking about suicide, just to get the little help. But if you know someone who you have asked, and they said, yeah, you know what, I really do think it would be better if I was dead, call 911. The paramedics, police, they are trained for this kind of thing. They are trained in crisis response, even if it's 72-hour mandatory psych evaluation. That is enough time to save a life. You cannot save every single person, but you can save one life at a time, one person at a time, because like we saw, one death can infect an entire county. And remember, it's really important to remember, that people who die by suicide don't want to end their life, they want to end their pain, they want to end their mental suffering. Asking them just the simple question, hey, are you feeling all right? You know, you want to talk, you want to grab a coffee, hang out for a little bit, catch up? That can really change a day. Opening a door, saying hi to someone in the hallway, that can brighten their day, can make them feel special, makes them say, you know what, somebody saw me today. Someone saw me, I am a person, I am here. That can save a life. I told you I'd keep it short. Any questions?
Does anybody got any questions? Go ahead, Hugh.
I'll make a comment. Suicide is the leading cause of death in the military.
Mm-hmm.
Over and above wounds.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
You only missed Door County for how long now?
Until February.
Oh, until February.
Yep.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Moving on. How about a special report from the Administrator?
I'm certain it will not be as good as Miss Door County, but let me give it a shot here. As we all have talked since this year began, we're planning our move from a largely represented or to a minimally represented organization. We've already adopted the employee handbook, we did that back in April. We've made tremendous changes to our health insurance that we will see the benefits of in 2015. The next two pieces are the Administrative Manual, which has been vetted by one meeting of the department heads. There'll be a second follow-up meeting tomorrow. So far, there, things are going well. The document will be presented officially to the Administrative Committee in discussions with our chairman, the Administrative Committee, on September 17. Will be the first hearing for that document, and then the Administrative Committee will make the decision. I'm certain with all of you involved, as to which other committees would like to have a hearing on that Administrative Manual. I don't know if Dan would like to add anything to that?
Well, I think when we have the Administrative Committee, then we'll pass it on to the rest of the committees, not every one, but we'll make sure that everybody has a kick at the can, so we'll pick the committees that everybody has been served on, so everybody will have a fair shot at it. And then it'll come back to the Administrative Committee, and then it'll go on to the full county board, right?
Yes.
So by then, we should have all the stuff ironed out, so.
We have.
By the time you go through the Administrative Committee, Finance Committee, Parks and Airport, we'll make sure that there's a few people that haven't served on all three of those committees, we'll get into other committees that some of them are on resource planning, maybe.
And remember, this is a living, breathing document, so we'll take care of it hopefully for 2014, because our Human Resources Director needs to have meetings with the employees so that they can see the changes. For many of them, there will be changes from their represented contract to being nonrepresented or minimally represented, so there may be some vacation changes for some folks. There might be changes in comp time. There very likely will be changes in how they're compensated. If, right now, in some of the contracts, the employees are getting premium pay for certain duties, that, through the recommendation in the Administrative Manual, may change. So this is a document that's subject to your amendment, where the management team did not provide enough detail, or if you wish to amend it, that will be something that will be up to you. We did our best with this document, we really took our time, but I'm certain that there will be something that we may have missed. Or if you think we did a good job, you certainly could adopt it without any amendments. But we'll have that discussion through September and into October. So that's coming. The other item before you is the compensation study update. The chairman asked that our Human Resources Director do a presentation at a joint meeting of the Administrative and Finance Committees. So I've attached that document, that Kelly went through our union contracts and pulled their pay grades, and also the pay grades in step plans for your nonrepresented employees are also in the packet. You all have received that. Of note, we do have a 10-step pay grade system for our nonrepresented employees. What that means is that if someone is hired in and they're at step one or step two, they would almost automatically increase to the next step of the pay grade, and what we've been doing is also doing a cost of living increase. So some of these salaries have been increasing by 4% or 5% each year, given the way that pay grades, or those pay grades are structured. So that's why it's important for you to see them. The new compensation study that will be introduced to you at, probably at your October meeting, it's in the works right now, will be a different type of system with a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. The choice will be yours if you wish to change from the way we used to do business with this 10-step pay grade and ease into a different method, which would mean there would probably be just simply a cost of living increase instead of that step increase with the cost of living increase. In addition, the folks that are currently represented, the 140 or so, are accustomed to those other pay grades that are included in your, the attachment and in your packets. There is, with the elimination of those labor agreements, there's no place for these folks to land. So that's another purpose for us to do that compensation study, to give them a pay grade to move into, with, again, a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. And it would be really for more control for you folks, as we, I'm looking at our Finance Committee Chair, as we develop budgets each year with limited resources, it becomes even more important that we get a handle on the compensation issue. So that'll be coming before you. If there's any questions, I see Kelly in the back of the room. She is more familiar with our pay grades and the pay plans that are currently in place, so if there's any questions, we can have her come up and add to this. If not, sure, that's up to him.
Go ahead.
When we see the pay grades, is it possible to see the benefits that everybody has also?
We can, absolutely.
So that they have their total, and I don't think it's a bad idea to let the employees know what their benefit package is also.
Correct.
Yes, we did that as part of those listening sessions a couple of months ago, as you recall. We had about 127 of our 457 on the payroll today employees participate in that, and there is a plan for our HR Director to do more employee meetings as this year ends. There also was a newsletter that went to all of the employees with the changes in health insurance talked about in there. And actually, for the first time, we also did, I don't see Shirley, or do, yes, we do. The Finance Department did a statement to all of the employees, as you recall, with their wages, what their health insurance is worth, and their vacations, so. But we can do certainly more of that.
John, go ahead.
I was wondering if it would be possible, when we get the new pay schedule, that we could have it on paper, that we could look at the old in the right hand and the new in the left and compare them one by one, so we're not sitting here on this Zoom.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, the minutes of the meeting are from the last Tuesday, July 23. Is there a motion to approve them? Motion by Kathy, seconded by Biz. Any corrections or additions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's passed. Since the roll man came late, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Moving on. We'll reconvene, we're going to have a short meeting, I hope, a real short one.
Could have been 10 minutes shorter.
Anyway, what we have before us.
He's so cool, isn't he?
I tried to be.
No, I meant him.
Anyway, what we have this morning, too, is a 20-year of dedicated service by Michael Van Ness. And Mike, I'd like to have you come forward. Mark's going to give a 20-minute speech on how great you were.
Well, I don't have that much in my brain to even make a 20-minute speech about anything I even know about, but Michael, when I met Michael, when I got on county board, he was working for, at that time, the Social Services Department. Spent over 20 years with the county, couple of accomplishments, taking very good care of our senior citizens, lessening the waiting lists by prudent budgeting and cost-cutting and getting services to the needed people. He also, probably his latest accomplishment, the one that we really should, we're proud of everything he did, but those of you who have been by, the new ADRC, Michael was the first director of the ADRC, got that program off the ground and got it running, did such a good job, he felt he could leave. Could run itself, so, thank you, Michael, for 20-plus years of service to the county.
And if you'd like to say anything, go ahead.
Yeah, let him talk.
Oh, yeah, he gets to talk.
I get the other 19 minutes.
Yeah, the other 19 minutes.
But I wasn't planning to say anything, but I think I just, it was an honor to work for the county for the past 20-plus years and to serve the residents of the county. And I would thank the county board, present and past, for the support that they've given to the programs that I've served, and I hope that in the future, that you can continue to do that for the citizens of Door County. So thank you for this honor.
Thank you. First resolution on the 2013-54 transfer of non-budgeted funds. I guess I'd like to have maybe Grant explain how this all happened, from the Administrative Finance Committee and. I gotta let you talk something on something today, Mark.
I suppose. I don't think people have questions, you just want me to get a rundown of how we got to where we are.
Okay, I have a motion made by, who wants to make the motion in the past?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
David, seconded by Joel. Dale, you want to take a shot at her a little bit on, this is with the compensation for the first responders, that it's a stipend, is the right word, is the right word, more than a?
Well, it's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement is the right word.
And why this came about is that the county learned in the not-too-distant past that it would not be in a position to offer workers' compensation coverage to the first responder groups or its members. And understanding that this came as an unwelcome surprise to the first responder groups, and probably more appropriately, the fire departments and the municipalities that sponsor these groups in terms of a budgetary hit in the middle of a calendar year, the first responder groups, or again, more appropriately, the fire departments and municipalities, requested, and the Administrative and Finance Committee thought it was appropriate to reimburse each first responder group the cost of the premium paid for workers' compensation insurance, and they set the rate at $150 for each certified first responder EMT, and for 2013, excluded firefighter EMTs. And then in 2014, and this will be part of the 2014 budget, it is merely a recommendation in this resolution, to reimburse each first responder group the cost of the premium paid for workers' compensation insurance, and they set the rate at $150 for each certified first responder EMT, and for 2013, excluded firefighter EMTs. And then in 2014, and this will be part of the 2014 budget, it is merely a recommendation in this resolution, to reimburse each first responder group the cost of the premium paid for workers' compensation insurance at the rate of $150 for each certified first responder, including all licensed EMRs and first responders. And that was set at $150. In the agreement that eventually will be entered into between the county and each first responder group, we have pegged the reimbursement rate for workers' compensation insurance at a benchmark, and that's the amount that the state decides is appropriate for that type of employment, and there is a benchmark for that. So that's sort of the long and the short of it. The fiscal impact in 2013 is $11,700, and that's where we're at, because it's outside of the ordinary budget process. Section 65.90 of the statutes requires a 2/3rds vote of the entire membership for this resolution to be adopted.
Okay. Are there any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board. Go ahead, Hugh.
Greg, do the first responders have to agree and sign on to this? Is that, am I, did I miss that, or are we just saying this is it?
My understanding is that this is, again, I haven't communicated directly with the first responders on this element, but my understanding is that they requested reimbursement. The reimbursement rate was suggested by the insurance representative who represents most of the first responder groups. And again, I'm talking generically about first responder groups, we're really talking about fire departments and municipalities. So in essence, they are getting what they requested, so I believe that there is consensus on this issue.
Thank you.
Any other? If not, go over to the voter board and vote yes or no. That is passing a vote of 20 yes with one absent. Next item is the approval of the First Responder Group Agreement, 2013-55. Dale, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, we have not yet presented this agreement to the first responder, well, we have presented to them through email, we have not had a meeting with the first responder group. I would feel much more comfortable if we did take this to the first responder groups and go over with them line by line like we did earlier, to ask if they had any changes or not. But at this moment, I'd like to postpone this till our September 2013 county board meeting. I'd like to make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Are you ready for the voter board on this one, or not, or? Yeah. Just wait one second, I'll see.
What was the motion?
Motion was to postpone it till the next county board meeting, which will probably be the 26th instead of the.
Well, September 13.
September.
2013 meeting, whatever date it is.
We're just testing Jill to see if she knows how to run it.
I was thinking about it, that I was going to wait for this. Change the numbers. Get your deputy.
Okay?
Okay, we can go to the voter board and vote yes or no on the postponement.
Can I say something first?
Go ahead. I guess you're not really, well, okay, go ahead, yeah.
This particular item is before you, through the combined effort of our Insurance Committee and also Emergency Services Committee. We've been batting this thing around for about the last three or four months.
We've been batting this thing around for about the last three or four months. As chairman of the insurance committee, and I've checked with some of the other members, we are not being contacted by anyone relative about, relative to the short notice and/or whatever. It was only midweek last week that I got an email requesting that we change the seven-day notice on protocol or any kind of change to go to something longer, and I had brought back 30 days with the grant. And then soon thereafter, I talked with John Cook from Gardener Town, and he suggested we go to 45 days. 45 days only because 30 days might fall midterm of either Village Town or whatever else meeting and give us more time to get it accomplished. I do know that at the meeting of EMS, the joint meeting, we talked about taking it to the various municipalities, and I thought it was being accomplished by everybody. I took mine to my town, and they had no problem with it. I don't know where we're falling short here, if we're not getting the message out, but we can bat this thing around until everybody decides that they're going to get, you know, a product that we can't, that we can't support. This thing is to the point of what's, you know, the conduit is either through me or through Dale at EMS, but let's share that kind of information and then get it to Grant so we can make that correction. Although, we'll be talking about this for six months.
Well, he's got to postpone till the, you want to respond to that, Dale? Dale's getting, as chairman of EMS, is getting some feedback.
Right. And this agreement is through the EMS committee. The risk management was part of the previous resolution.
Right.
And I did get some calls last night, I did get an email on Sunday requesting that we delay this so that everybody has a chance to look at it and take a look at it with their lawyers. So I'm just giving them the benefit of the doubt, and I think it would be a much smoother transaction if we have good communication before we try to pass something and then find something wrong. And I did put a deadline in September 2013 meeting on this.
Okay. It is going to be carried, it'll be done in September. So the motion to postpone it till September is on. Go to the voter board and vote yes or no. Hold on.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Go.
This is for the delay now?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, till September.
I'm a little conflicted about this one.
That is passed on a vote of 19 yes, one no. Next item is the approval of the grant gifts and donations from the sheriff's department. Biz, would you like to speak on that and make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 2013-56, and then I will talk.
Seconded by Kathy.
By our rules of order, any donation that exceeds $1,000 has to be approved by the full county board. And the Door County Board of Realtors wants to donate $2,000 for the purchase of automatic electronic defibrillators. This came before the law enforcement committee at our last meeting, and we made a unanimous motion to move it forward to the full county board and accept the $2,000 from the Board of Realtors. I believe it'll buy a couple of them to put in squad cars and potentially could save lives of the public. And the sheriff is here, if you, you know, would like to speak to this, I welcome it and answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
That we should support it. I think, is there a gentleman here that was saved by this today? Did somebody show up that?
Not yet.
Right. Well, I understood maybe he was going to be present to show you that he was resuscitated by someone who had a defibrillator site.
I, yeah, that I don't know.
So I think it's a good idea, because there are people who, it shows that they can be saved.
All in favor, Derek, I'll just add a little comment about the Door County Board of Realtors. Every year, they have a golf outing, and the profits from that outing go to some organization or something like, last year, I think it was Humane Society, and the year before was Habitat for Humanity. So this year, they decided to go with the county with the defibrillator thing, so.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Profits, profits that came from a golf outing that the agents. Did you win? No. It's not a winning-type thing.
It's a fun thing.
It's a fun thing, and they have a little cookout, and let the profits go to it. It's a pretty nice outing, yeah. Biz?
Yeah, just a comment. Frankly, I wish we had enough money to put a defibrillator in every squad car. Because, you know, it'll be up to the sheriff of which cars are going to get these defibrillators. And in the past, you know, we've had deputies, I think just last month, that did CPR on a victim out on the highway until the first responders got there and actually saved his life and got a letter before the committee thanking it. Had it not been for that officer, you know, I mean, the man would have passed on, but at least the Board of Realtors wants to give us a couple thousand dollars. We'll buy a couple of them, and that's a good step forward.
Okay.
Say thank you.
Okay, on the floor, is the motion to accept the donation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is passed. Next item is the new position request for 2014. Maureen or Kelly are going to speak to it? Somebody want to make a motion to pass that, so we can discuss it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Chuck is seconded by Hugh. Go ahead, who's going to be the lead?
We have, I hear from Resources Director Handy, who presented the report to the joint meeting of admin and finance. Since you don't have eyes in the back of your head, she's making her way to the podium right now.
Good morning. Before you, you have several requests for positions. The first section are, the first few are for hours of increase, so those positions already exist, and the department heads are asking for an increase of hours due to the workload. The second set are actual new positions, and most of the department heads are available if you have specific questions on them. Otherwise, the one that I would want to point out, the highway position would not start until July 1st of 2014, and we'll go back to the highway committee for review. And the IS position is the result of the information systems department making a reorganization.
Just a reminder, this is to be put in the budget, so you will have at least two more times that you can add to it or subtract from it, so it isn't cast in stone on this vote today. John mentioned on highway, they're going to reevaluate whether they really will need the person or not, correct, John?
That is true.
And they'll make that decision in July, about, whether they'll, that's July of 2014. So are there any questions? Chuck?
Yeah, Kelly, could you just explain that other one with IS, that it's easier to understand that it isn't adding a new person, it's just changing their position?
What Tim is asking for is he's going to eliminate a programmer position and hire a PC specialist. The technical skills that are required in the IS department at this time need to be from a PC specialist versus a programmer.
Dale?
I've got a question on human services, the fiscal impact. It says annual costs, including fringe benefits, the increase in our receptions from 20 to 40, it's $18,000. Does that include the benefits?
Yes.
Yes.
Sometimes, single versus family for health insurance will make a big difference in that.
Are there any other questions? Ken?
Yeah, this isn't a complete list. I asked about this at our meeting, and the way I understand it, there's at least one request from a department head for extra staff that hasn't been brought to us yet. And we're going to hear from that department head at one of our later meetings but before the budget hearing? Is that correct?
If I could?
Go ahead.
No, there's no additional position request. There is a position in buildings and maintenance that the, it's currently working its way through the grievance process. So that's a different, entirely different animal than what's before you today. As soon as we hear about the grievance, the result of the grievance, which should be at the end of this week, then that position will go to the property committee. I've been talking to the property committee chair about that. He's nodding his head yes. You don't have eyes in the back of your head, so he is nodding his head yes. We've talked about possibly the September meeting. The grievance is due, I think, at the end of this week. And if that's the case, then the positions you're talking about, which are both in place, they're not new positions. This is new positions for next year's budget. That, I think what you're talking about are existing positions.
Okay, so the request was not additional. It was to replace some.
That's correct. Existing positions, that's part of the grievance process right now. We have a position, it's not on your agenda to discuss today, but if you certainly want to meet about this later on today, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, go to the voter board and vote yes or no. You what? That is passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. Next item is the MAP amendment, Beach Road revocable trust. Hugh would, I mean, Ken, you can speak to that.
I could, yes. This is for.
Mariah's right behind you there.
Yes, I know I talked to her already, because she will certainly do, I did talk to her about it, and she'd said I did understand it, but certainly she will do a much better job explaining it than I will. But Thomas Rayburger, is that correct? For pronunciation.
Yeah.
Wants to rezone his property from single-family residential to Heartland 3.5. He wants to establish basically a community farm and museum. And beyond that, Mariah, I'll let you explain the rest of it.
Morning.
Morning.
It's really not more complicated than what Ken just said. These are two relatively large parcels off of Beach Road in Liberty Grove, so if you turn at the Ice Cream Factory instead of continuing on Highway 42, it's just a ways down the road there. They've already started doing some community gardening there. There's a lot of old barns on the property that they want to restore, and right now, that whole area is zoned, single-family, 30,000, which is a residential small-lot district which doesn't allow for agriculture, and so they would like to rezone to an agricultural district. And I believe we had pretty much unanimous and overwhelming support from the town board and from neighboring property owners as well for the proposal.
The neighbors came out in force to support this project.
Okay, you want to make a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Susan. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept ordinance number, or to pass ordinance number 2013-14.
Okay, seconded by Hugh. Are there any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no. You ready?
Oh, yeah.
That is passed on a vote of 20 yes, one absent. There is no new business, I know of any oral committee reports? Chuck?
Yes, after a little discussion at, with Dan, he thinks that we're holding too much money in our boat launch fund, and I guess I just wanted to not have any hidden secrets here. As the board previously approved a grant, we're doing dredging down at Shooter Oars Dock, and over the past couple of years, we've been saving up money in the boat launch fund to do some matching grants to be able to do the dredging down there. Our rough estimates to do half of the dredging comes out to about $160,000. One of our grants presently that we have is at $85,000, which would be matched by us in the boat launch fund. We currently have about $145,000, of which that money is designated strictly for boat launch facilities. So if anybody has any questions or concerns about that, please contact me. And Dan, I hope that keeps it above board.
Okay, good, good, everybody knows about it, that's good. Any questions? Any other oral committee reports? If not, any review of the committee meetings? Anybody have any questions on the committee meetings?
Minutes.
Minutes? Meetings, same thing, I guess. If not, anybody have any questions on vouchers, claims, and bills? Okay, just want to get out here by 10 o'clock. WCA conference is September 22nd to 24th. Next county board meeting, we need a motion to change the date from, to the 26th of the Thursday following county board.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Does everybody understand that? We're going to have the Thursday, 9:00 here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One other item.
Oh, I have a question. Is it too late to sign up for the WCA conference?
No, you're going.
Yep. I was waiting for someone to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.